Hers is a lot better.
And see if anybody has any question or comments.
If you'd like, I could give an overview.
Okay.
And what we have planned to do is to, I was going to speak mainly about process and procedure and moving forward and some of the important things that are in here, things that are not funded. And then Chuck will actually go through, he'll walk you through the comparisons. So hopefully, any questions that you have, by way of comparisons, can be addressed in that, in that manner. Before we even start on that, I just want to say a big thank you to Chuck and Cecile. As you all know, I was out with the flu for about four days and they were able to keep the process going. So we didn't get further behind. I was here all week last week and able to, to develop the message and view all the numbers with them. But I do want to say just what an important component that each of these two people have played in this process. And I'm very grateful for them stepping up to the plate. Chuck has an excellent analysis that is attached that he will walk you through in just a few moments. As you note, from the very onset, I try to come up with themes each year in terms of what the budget message is. And the theme I'm trying to give across this year is basically the theme is the team. That we've got five council members who are elected to represent the best interest of the town of Abingdon. And I think we can do lots of, of great things in moving the town forward to make it into that economic sustainable community that we want to have, that has a lot of social equity in it and provides a lot of services in addition to the core services. The budget that you have before you is a balanced budget, which is required by law. We have a proposed, and it is right now, a draft. It is a proposed balanced budget. And if you flip to page seven, you will see that the last year's budget was fourteen million, five twenty-two oh eighty. This year's, and I'm talking of general fund, this year is twenty thousand, oh twenty-six, uh, twenty million, oh twenty-six, seven twenty-three. Thank you, Bob. And in parentheses, you'll see the breakdown is the real operational budget, which is what we had last year, has decreased by close to a million dollars. So the real operational budget is thirteen million, five twenty-six, seven thirty. And then the capital outlay is six million, five hundred thousand dollars. Now, and again, Chuck will give you some breakdowns and comparisons that are deeper in depth than what I'm giving you right now. If you drop down to the sewer fund, you will notice that the sewer fund last year was two point nine eight two million. This year is three point one four two million, which is an increase. But primarily, that increase is due to us transferring salaries, portions of salaries from some of the staff in the administrative building here that do work with regard to the sewer fund. This is at the recommendation of both our internal auditor and our, our external auditor, as well as our bond consultants when we spoke to them last. So a portion, just by way of example, and Chuck can probably articulate it a little better than me when he gets to that point. But for example, a portion of Chuck's salary is attributable to the sewer department because he handles all the things that flow through there, just as he does the general fund. Likewise, my management, I manage this portion of the sewer fund. So portions of my salary are included in there. And then several of the other staff members here within the finance department are included. I will say with regard to the sewer budget, and I'll come back to the general fund budget, but with regard to the sewer budget, the sewer budget, by and large, is self-sustainable and has been for many years. I'm now into my eleventh year. And since I've come here, I've had no reason to transfer any money into the sewer fund, as was the prior administration's practice of transferring a hundred thousand dollars each year into the sewer fund. And in fact, we're now recapturing that money back into the general fund. It's really just a paper transfer. So it's not like somebody's taking a big, large chunk of money and, and handing it out. It's just going from one fund into another fund. Again, that's at the suggestion of financial consultants and auditors. So procedurally, in moving forward, what will happen over the course of the next two months is number one, we will have a public hearing scheduled for the May first meeting where the public will have the opportunity to participate and offer comments and suggestions relative to the budget. There will be a first reading at that point in time. And then in June, there would be the second reading. And assuming everything passed, the budget will go into effect on July the one, the first, twenty seventeen. There will be the necess- the necessity, if council chooses to keep the reassessment funds in the real estate in the budget, which we have them worked into the budget. And Chuck will tell you how much those exact figures are. But by law, we have to have a second public hearing that has to be separate from the, from the regular budget public hearing. But basically, it is not a legal tax increase, but it's just putting the public on notice that their tax bills, some, some may be less, but some will be increasing next year. If you choose, and the council has done this in pa- in the past, if you choose to reduce the tax rate to offset that, you can certainly do that as, as well. But for purposes of trying to keep the revenues up, it's my recommendation within the budget message that we leave the reassessments in there. It's not a large sum of money, as Chuck will tell you. So it didn't, it didn't yield a tremendous amount of an increase in the overall budget. But nonetheless, the law requires us to have a public hearing that can't be the same as the budget public hearing. And we did this during the last assessment year. So it will be nothing new to, to the council in, in doing this. Nonetheless, public hearing with public having the right to comment and offer suggestions relative to that. We are using no reserve funds to balance this budget. Last year, we used, I believe, about three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to balance the capital improvement portion of the budget. So there is no reserved funds that are allocated within this budget. There is obviously bond issuance funds that are in the capital improvement aspect that we went out to borrow the money before, that we can spend some more time talking about in just a moment. There is no cost of living increase for any employees that work for the town within this proposed budget. There is, however, seventy-five thousand dollars of discretionary money that's in the budget for merit increases. And it's my understanding that, excuse me, the council wanted to go in that direction instead of an across-the-board cost of living adjustment. We would be trying to base any adjustments on merit. And we will be looking to department heads and supervisors to make their case for when those need to occur. And we will make adjustments accordingly within the boundaries of that seventy-five thousand dollars, if council chooses to keep that in there. An important topic of interest that this council and the prior council asked me to look into was the scenario for the hazard duty pay for law enforcement officers commonly referred to as LEOs. And the figure to put LEOs in the budget is around two hundred thousand dollars to be able to do that. I was also charged with not only finding a scenario of how to do it, but to find a way that it would be sustainable. Because once we get into LEOs, we can't get out of LEOs. It's a perpetual thing. What it does is it allows the law enforcement officers to retire at an early age because there are inherent health ins- health risks with law enforcement profession. So with the right age and the right number of years of service, they can re- they can retire and they will get this added benefit. And the added benefit is designed primarily to pay for their health insurance between then and when they would become eligible for social security and Medicare. So we have scenarios that I have developed, that I've presented to you within, within the budget message. Bear with me just for a moment.
Page fifteen.
Page fifteen. You will note that there are several ways that you could, you could do it. The sustainability piece is going to be the hardest thing that you're going to have to look at. Because when you look at sustainability, you've got to factor in a lot of other things, other than just this cost. Because as we know from the past year, health insurance increased. So anytime something else increases in the budget, it makes a greater burden upon this and any other programs that we have with, within the budget. But the best-case scenario that I could come up with, and I discovered this from talking with some of my colleagues of similar jurisdictions as the town of Abingdon in terms of, of size, both budgetary size, population, number of law enforcement officers, was to do a twofold process. Number one was to basically require the officers to absorb a certain portion of their health insurance. Right now, we're paying a hundred percent for health insurance and a substantial portion of health insurance for the family program. So Chuck and I and Cecile, we calculated some numbers. And if you took thirty percent and required the officers to pay thirty percent of the health insurance, and we had one officer who was making in the neighborhood of eighty-nine to ninety-one thousand, somewhere in that ballpark range, that retired and the job was not filled, this would pay for LEOs. The uncertainty, as I've tried to articulate in the message, is that I can't legally force somebody to retire. I can't make them make that decision. Now, my perspective on this is that if you're age fifty, fifty with, and Stacy, did I write the right number down? Is it age fifty with twenty-five years of service?
Right.
Okay. If you're age fifty with twenty-five years of service, it's to your benefit to retire because there are many things that you can do. The stipend from LEOs will pay for your health insurance. And you could also go out and get another job and perhaps even last long enough to retire in another job that is perhaps a lot less stressful than law enforcement is. But again, there's an uncertainty there. And until officers start taking this and we are able to lose one high-paying officer through attrition, I can't guarantee that these numbers are going to work in a sustainable way. The other ways are set forth below, and they're less appealing ways. But two of the other jurisdictions I talked to indicated that the police officers pay the full ride from their health insurance. And to do that, in this scenario, police officers would have to pay sixty percent of their health insurance, which would be a tremendous hit. And I don't know that that is, is something that they would be interested in. But at the same time, that, under that scenario, and I believe Chuck agrees with me, it's pretty much sustainable as long as they're, as long as they're absorbing sixty percent. The other unpopular ways are to increase real estate taxes by three cents, which gets you two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Reduce non-departmental funding by two hundred thousand dollars for the attrition of enough employees that total to two hundred thousand dollars. My preference, if you go down this road, is option number one that I gave you, where they pay a third and we lose one officer to attrition. Sustainability, I can't guarantee that it would be sustainable this year. Can't guarantee it would be sustainable next year, even because of the fact that health insurance could increase again, revenue should de- could decrease. And so there are lots of uncertainties. And with regard to sustainability, sometimes you've, you've got to take a risk. But sometimes the risk will outpay the gain. I'll just throw that out there to, to you. As all of you know, I think, you know, my father was a police officer, and I'm very passionate about wanting to do something for police officers. I do know that they suffer from health issues. But to make this balance, this budget balance, year after year, we have got to come up with the right formula to make it sustainable. And I think option one gives you, gives you that.
Well, you only have one officer that makes pay this, and that's the team.
No.
That figures.
That figures with benefits.
That figures with fringes, with benefits. It was salary and benefits.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Is there an officer currently in the process of retiring?
Could possibly be. You know, there have been hints of officers, more than, more than one, in fact, there have been hints of officers who would, would retire fairly soon. But again-
Is that just losing that one position during this fiscal year?
Yeah.
And it would-
They wanted to add that officer back next year, they could do it.
No.
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 Never move that.
No, they should go to the revenue stream to pick up that cost of that salary.
Until such time as revenue, general revenues, you know, meals, lodging, real estate, they increase. Now, what I could foresee is, because what theoretically happens is you've got officers who, and let's just arbitrarily throw out the number, that make fifty thousand dollars a year, that might be eligible for this, that would take it. And with their fringes, then we're able to hire a new officer in at twenty thousand dollars less than that figure. And so you've got that savings as a result of that. But to make my scenario work, and I think we overanalyze this, to tell you the truth, but to make my strategy work, you've got to lose one high-paid officer to attrition.
So, and they would have to, they would have to resign this as soon as we enact it. They can resign thirty days after.
They could. But I, I want to be as open and transparent with the council as possible is that that particular person, and this is personnel, we, we shouldn't be mentioning any names or anything. But that particular person has a substantial amount of pay that is due to them upon leaving, that would have to be paid out over a period of time. So it might be midway through the budget year before we would fully start to see the benefit of that. So you might only see half of it in the upcoming fiscal year.
And we don't have any idea about sustainability in reality, just in theory.
Just in theory. There's nothing in, in, in the budget period that I can say one hundred percent is sustainable. Because-
We can say one hundred percent this is a new two hundred thousand dollar debt.
Yes, you can. You can say that.
The other thing that concerns me about this, and I'm, I'm for everybody else. I think they deserve it. But they've got a pretty, pretty large police force. And, you know, we're going to have to be willing to go up on taxes if, if any of these scenarios don't happen, unless we ask the police officers to pick up a hundred percent of their health insurance. Because health insurance this year, as you know, when a hundred, twenty-three thousand dollars.
Rick, what are you recommending, a real estate tax as opposed to an entertainment tax?
Well, frankly, Wayne, I just forgot to tell you the truth, forgot to even put the entertainment thing in there. But there could be an entertainment tax imposed that would, and I don't know the numbers in terms of what that would translate. It would be a significant amount of, of revenue that could be generated by that. One of the reasons that, that I felt like, and maybe I got mixed signals, but I felt like that maybe the council wasn't leaning in that direction because there was some pushback from Barter Theater folks. And I've, I know there's pushback from the cinema people. They, you know, they contacted me about this sometime.
There's going to be pushback from a real estate tax.
Oh, yeah. Any, any tax, there's always going to be a pushback.
I would favor an entertainment tax. Well, first off, I think that this has gone on, I mean, they, they came to the council, I wasn't on the council, they came.
Last year.
Last year.
Four years.
And I'm concerned that we, if we don't enact LEOs, we might have expenses that we don't anticipate. Because these, from what I understand, Oblivious gave the report that the police officers have come forward and agreed to the thirty percent. That's a hundred and three thousand dollars out of two hundred thousand. I think they're going to be extremely disappointed. And I think we had an opportunity this year to do that through, through some form. And to me, a real estate tax, they're already getting hit this year, some people, with the, with the reassessment. So an entertainment tax, to me, would, to cover the part that the policemen haven't covered, would make some sense.
I would not be in favor of that. And one of the reasons is, is, is just what Barter said. One of the things we don't want to do is kill the golden goose. Barter, as we all know, along the creeper trail are, are basically our, two of our biggest funding streams. And they're already having to cut prices on tickets because they're not keeping in full seats. And that extra dollar, while it might not seem a lot, it could be the difference between somebody coming and not coming to Barter Theater. And I would, and I would really, because what that does is that gives us the filter down effect. You're losing, not only are you losing a dollar, but you're losing twelve point three percent in, uh, taxes on both meals and lodging. And that is where the, that is where a good part of our stuff's coming up, coming from. And so if you have somebody going like, well, if I gotta pay extra money for Barter, then maybe I won't go out to eat, or maybe I'll wait before I come home, or maybe I won't spend the night. And I think that, or maybe come at all. And I think that that could- And I think that that could indirectly affect us. I do believe we had to find the funding streams to be able to fund this. Uh, I'm not sure that that's where I would find it at.
I'm just, uh.
I know, I know.
The other thing is, I think we're gonna have a hard time explaining to the police officers that, that we have, uh, non-government spending in the magnitude that we have. And I'm afraid we're gonna lose police officers because of the competition. And that creates a, a cost in itself.
About a hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred and three officers, so.
Well, we haven't, but we haven't. If you'll look, if you'll look at when the LEOs went in and other places had, we haven't lost those, those officers.
I know, Rick, but my, my point is that they came forward and offered to fund part of it, and I think they're expecting it in there.
Well, I want to, while they would expect it unless somebody's promised, have, have either, either one of you all promised?
No.
Does any of you?
We didn't promise anything, but we talked about it.
And what, what, did you, did you weigh them to where they might be, or?
No, I was, I was in favor of it.
Right. Okay, well, and the reason is, I had some, a couple of people come to me and say that it was promised to them that they would, if they elected you guys, that they, that they were LEOs.
I haven't made any promises. In fact, I didn't even know what LEOs was when I ran.
You know, and I would be against that. I mean, that's almost like vote, vote buying to me, you know? And so I would not think that that would be something that would even be ethical to do. So, uh, hopefully we didn't do that. But one of the things, as you look at this, if that, the police are expecting that, less up the taxes to do that, less up the, uh, less up the real estate tax. Because then that way, the people, we, we can say, this is gonna cost a million dollars over the next ten years, which is what it's gonna cost. Well, no, excuse me, two million dollars over the next ten years, that's the lease it'll cost. So less up the, less up the real estate rate now, let all our, our citizens know, and we're, I'm up for reelection, so, you know, I mean, that, you know, I'm taking, I'll be the one that takes the hit, not you all. But to say, this is for the police officers so they can retire, you know, so they can get a follow-in to LEOs so they can retire. And so then that would be, to me, that would be more palatable than trying to do the indirect. You know what I'm saying? These people aren't gonna, people coming into Barter and coming into Cinemall aren't going to know that they are being taxed so that our police officers can retire early, but our, but our, who they serve, you know, our people, our, our citizens here in Aggie, can, they wouldn't know. And they would say, well, yeah, that, that would work.
Because, uh, you know, I think public safety in, in everybody's mind is number one.
Was supposed to be.
It's our, it's our charge. For service, for service. If we're gonna, if we're ever gonna raise a real estate tax, uh, that's plenty of justification, uh, so I, I, I'll go for it.
Well, we also talked about a bed tax too, so we could maybe talk about bed tax to.
Well, I, here's the thing, and as I look at this, the bed tax, the bed, the, the real, and of course, now you and I both in the same business, the, uh, uh, all of the lodgings here are already paying twelve point three percent tax. We're already paying an extra seven percent. There are a lot of things that aren't paying the extra seven percent, but we are. And also lodging, and also meals are paying the extra seven percent. So why should we be penalized even more because the, you know, per bed, per night that we rent? Why should we be penalized for that when we're already making up the largest segment, that, that meals and lodging tax? We're already making up the most of it anyway. Why should we be expected to make even more? Why?
Here's the thing about talking about any tax increases. Since we have not done that really in depth in any of our work sessions, we're gonna have to pull anything out that we think requires a tax increase, and we're gonna have to have a tax increase workshop. Cause we've got too many options that we're not gonna be able to decide here tonight.
Yeah. I'd say you're probably right.
We're, we're not gonna be able, you know, we left the meeting thinking that the only thing we were gonna increase was cigarette tax. If there's any other tax increases, we're gonna have to have another workshop.
Yeah. Cause I, because I was under the impression at that time, as you were in the impression of like Barter, I was under the impression that LEOs wasn't gonna be something we could fund and know sustainably and continually, we could fund for the next X number of years.
And it's not, it's not funded, so.
Well, it's, yeah, yeah.
The, the bed tax, well, I, and I'm getting there with that, but, um, you know, that, if you look at the scenarios on page, um, fifteen, there is, there, uh, in terms of raising real estate taxes, um, whether, whether you went, we just threw three percent in there, three cents in there, uh, on the hundred. If you lowered that, you're basically lowering it by, uh, by seventy-five thousand dollars per penny. So, um, you know, you consider a lesser tax, um, I did throw in there, you know, reducing this, Wayne mentioned the non-departmental funding, but you all pretty much indicated the ones you wanna fund, and we have cut, cut those back significantly. And then the attrition of retiring, retiring employees. But again, going to sustainability, we don't know if, when, when they're going to move out.
Well, you know, the other thing is, is you're looking at sustainability, are, are those people, are, are you looking at the entire staff shrinking over a period of the next few years? Are you looking at expanding? And I think as the town expands and things like fire department and people like that that might need, need additional employees over the next seven, eight, or ten years, you're not looking at a smaller government, you're actually looking at probably a larger government.
Well, bottom line is, we've got to find additional revenue streams to carry us into the future.
Well, that's, I know, that's, 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 that's the whole, you know, that's.
You know, like what you hinted on page twenty-six, you motel in X nineteen years almost complete, you're not getting anything from that right now. Do you have a estimate of what that would bring?
No, well, based, based on, uh, what is it, fifty-seven percent occupancy?
The new restaurant up here, um, next to the courthouse, and what?
White Birch.
White Birch, and then the sweet shop. So th- those are some, th- those are some things that are, they're small, well.
They're small.
But they're, they're there. And then one, one of the things that has, uh, always been of interest, and I think Bob goes back with me on this one, we've talked about it for quite some time, and, and that is if you can open Berry Drive into the incubator, it lends itself to, number one, there's a hotelier that's indicated he would be interested at that point in time of putting a hotel somewhere in vicinity of his existing hotel. And there is probably enough land left after the right-of-way goes in for another restaurant to go up there. And that's, um, just something that we would have to work, uh, with, would probably have time to work on. And I would work on trying to make that come to play. Now, I will tell you, it's not a popular thing with VDOT for some reason.
They hate the idea.
They hate the idea.
It's too many little roads joining each other. There's no, you know.
I know the college is very supportive and.
Like Hartwood would be.
Yeah.
Hartwood's too, oh, yeah, Hartwood's a drag shop there.
Well, you know, we got a graded pad at eighty-fourteen, and, uh, interchange has been approved, actually, Marty and Tyson, I remember.
Yeah. Was for Walmart.
Here's where we need to go back. What we need to go back to is this, if we're gonna enact any new taxes, we're gonna have to have a new workshop. So you've got a bed tax in this budget message.
Here it's a bed tax, and they're saying, um, well.
Garbage can fee.
Yeah, there's, um, the garbage can fee increase, bed tax.
I think we all agreed to the garbage can, uh, the trash can increase. We did not agree, all agreed to the bed tax. And we did agree to an increase in cigarette tax. So we're gonna have to have a workshop.
Well, we're gonna have to.
If that's gonna have to bounce the budget.
Yeah, we need to do it quick, it'll advertise it, it is.
Well, it's actually more quick than I thought it was, it's the twelfth at noon.
We're not gonna be able to do any of that stuff on a surprise.
I'm going after Wednesday. I'm gonna be gone, I'm gonna be gone a little Monday.
If, if we need to reduce the budget by another seventy-five thousand dollars, or if we need to, whatever we need to do, but we didn't agree to a bed tax in our meetings.
Well, here's, here's the option that you have is, um, well, number one, I got mixed signals, I think Chuck got mixed signals on, on the bed tax. We thought that was one that was good to go, but, um, the budget can stay, um, it can be advertised. Assuming you don't have anything that, that, that is really gonna throw it out of kilter, the budget can be advertised as is. And as long as you don't change one percent of the total budget after that public hearing, um, it can be reduced at that point in time. And one percent is gonna be what, a couple of hundred thousand?
Hundred and forty-five thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
Oh, it's fourteen thousand five hundred.
Well, you got the six point five in general fund, so I think in there, so it's two mil- it's twenty million.
So it can be advertised, and then if you all say take it out, we can take it out and reduce, um, reduce the budget down at that point in time.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to advertise it without LEOs.
It's ar- it's, I mean, LEOs is not in there.
Well, that's what I'm saying though, so, y- you know, that's two hundred thousand dollars if that's an adjustment.
If, if you all chose option number one, it would be less than one percent because the thirty percent that, of the health insurance that's already in there is.
It must be a hundred and three thousand.
First drop being a hundred and three thousand dollars. Let's, please say that again.
Have you talked to the police officers about that?
Scenario number one, yes.
Kathy, with our billings. Can, you were not scheduled or what's up, as you suggested?
I, we'd schedule tomorrow, if, if it's available tomorrow, he's leaving town Wednesday.
Afternoon.
Oh, you're leaving Wednesday afternoon.
I'm going down in the morning, but after that.
I'm going to Lexington, Kentucky.
I mean, we can't, we're gonna, we either have to be again, or we're gonna have to adjust this budget down for advertisement, although, so April the twelfth is because of what?
The advertising deadline for the newspaper, um, they require it be submitted, we have to advertise it fourteen days prior to the May first meeting. And I didn't realize that the, that the May meeting was on the very first day of May when I first looked at it. So I thought we had to look fourteen, Kim says we're gonna have it till the twelfth.
At noon.
At noon, and that's the drop dead deadline.
And that doesn't mean they'll have it in even then. Because if we've given them stuff before and they haven't put it in, so.
Well, let, let, let me just reiterate though, that unless, and maybe you all don't know this yet, maybe that's why you, you wanna have the other meeting, but unless you are going to, um, adjust this budget, and it's actually upward by greater than one percent, and it sounds like you might be adjusting it downward if we're taking out, you don't have to have another public hearing. You can do that after the existing public hearing. It's only when you increase the total budget by one percent or more that you have to have a separate public hearing. So that would mean that we would have to increase this budget. By two hundred thousand dollars. And with regard to LEOs, whatever you did with LEOs, a hundred and three thousand of that is already built in there in the health insurance. Because basically, if you adopted LEOs, the police officers are gonna pay thirty percent of the health insurance. So it reduces that health insurance number by a hundred and three thousand.
So do you think that that would be conducive to doing, cause this is a long, you know, the, the, the LEOs will probably increase over time. In fact, Tony was talking about originally, when we went into, years ago, it was thirty or forty thousand dollars. So do you think that that would be, that, that would be conducive to sliding that to where it would be like thirty percent this year, thirty-two percent next year, thirty-six percent the next year, to where the eventual, they would be paying all their insurance, but their LEOs would be paid?
Actually, I foresee it happening just the opposite, because you'll have the, you'll have hi- higher-paid officers retiring. And then newer officers coming aboard with the less salary.
But I don't think that you'll see LEOs dropping that.
Well, from what, um, we've investigated, it does not fluctuate that.
Well, I talked to the town, I was, uh.
How many years do they have it?
They've had it since two thousand and six or seven, so, they've had it ten years.
How about police forces that are our size, or have been like at thirty, thirty, where is it, thirty?
No, we're, we're like twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-six, but anyway, but. Twenty-four, four, twenty-six. So if we're in that thirty range.
Yeah.
So, so are we talking to anyone that's had that, the LEOs in the thirty range?
No, I'm, no, I can't get that.
See, that's where the.
I don't have demographic information to be of last.
But what you.
VRS should be able to extrapolate that for us.
We've asked.
Keep up the VRS.
But what you are saying is that at sixty percent of their health insurance, it would be sustainable.
Yeah.
So their choice would be less take-home pay or sustainable LEOs.
Well, and even, what, what I wanna say is, even if you, if, assuming we did sixty percent, and the police officers were all in favor of that, once those higher-paying officers drop off, then I see us adjusting that number to where they wouldn't be paid sixty percent, they might be paying forty percent or thirty percent.
It would be an annual thing, budgetary thing.
Yeah.
Well, if I understood what Tony Sullivan said, is that the position that we're talking about, I mean, that's gonna happen at some point, Greg. I don't see why that's not sustainable if that position is eliminated.
Eliminated, well, that means that, that means he's overstaffed now then.
Well.
And I would hope he's not doing that.
The, the thing about that, Wayne, is, is, it's a little more complicated than if, if, if we were empowered to say, you gotta leave, that's one thing, which we're not under his circumstances. And he has accumulated leave time that we have to pay under our policy. So best case scenario is, we'll only, if, if we did this this year, we would only recoup probably fifty percent, would you say, Chuck?
Yeah, I understand that, Greg, but what I'm saying long-term, uh, if you don't, if we don't, if you don't put that position back in, then, and it's gone, then that is sustainable as well.
If he agreed to a sal- if he agreed to employee cap, yeah. If he, but he would have to agree, it's like a salary cap for NFL or, or any of the other things, it'd be, it would be an employee cap, and he'd have to agree to that for five years or eight years.
That's up to us.
Well, and that's, that's, well, that's something that they at least agreed to in concept when we talked to them about it, was that that.
Thirty.
Yeah. The thirty, not the sixty.
Yeah, well, the sixty.
The other, you know, I'm gonna introduce something else in the room. We've got a fire department that's got one paid person. Bob said they had plenty of people on the call, uh, Clark Street called the other night, but then the next morning, he just had three people show up. So.
Six thirty.
Again, our core services are public safety, health, and welfare. And do we give all to one department and none to another? I mean, is that what we do?
You mean, Kathy, you're talking about, uh, their request for an employee, that, if our chief will get LEOs.
He can't.
So, we're giving, we're giving all public safety, we're using the same criteria.
Yeah.
But if you're talking about, you're right, if you're talking about Ed, then we probably do need Ed, what, pardon me.
He's requested four, he could probably do with three, but, you know, we've got a, we've got a huge gap in the fire department that we've been struggling with for years. I don't know if you all saw Ed's opinion piece after he left the council, but he said what kept him up at night was not having a fire coverage.
Okay, no surprise.
I think it's.
Well, and, and it's, you're really comparing two different things, because the one that night was a structured one. People come out for structured ones, they don't come out for alarms. It's the way it is, and he can't get the people out to respond on the alarm.
I guess my question just is, you know, you add LEOs now, and then you find out that you've gotta add firemen, so that's not a two hundred thousand dollar increase in your budget, that's a four hundred thousand dollar increase in your budget.
Plus, your LEOs will go up because of your employee base going down.
Right, because it's public safety.
Well, initially, it will go down because of the, um, the people who are hired to replace the older people, they have to be age fifty and twenty-five before they're eligible to get the.
But with the way you explained it to us, and maybe I'm wrong, was that, that the LEOs were based on, Chuck, and I think you were on this conversation too, was on the total number of employees that, that the town of Ed had. And so it didn't matter what age they were, it was just, it mattered.
The, the tables are, I mean.
I'm not talking about retirement, I'm talking about for, for the premium.
Premiums are spread throughout full-time employees.
There you go, and that's how those employees were came on were full-time, so they don't reduce anything, it'll increase, it would increase it.
I think this is a very important topic.
I think we need to know more about Leos, and obviously, I don't know what I thought I did, because I thought that the Leos was based on the total number of employees, regardless of what they made, with total number of full-time employees.
It is based off of, for, VRS is gonna charge you no matter how many employees you've got, that extra percentage for Leos. It's.
Irregardless of what they make?
Irregardless of what they make, they'll.
But the thing about it is, and maybe I'm not articulating this correctly, is they, you're, you're taking, say, four fifty thousand dollar officers who take this, and you're hiring somebody in twenty thousand dollars less, so you're saving that, um, um, twenty thousand dollars plus the fringes on that twenty thousand dollars. Which reduces the amount of what is necessary to fund the program.
And so, but, I mean, you mean the department of the program, the department, not the program.
Leos.
But the department, not the program, is that, is that what's the difference?
Yeah, 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 you're right.
So what you're saying is that you're, you're looking for, starting this next year, decreases every year from Tony's department, probably?
Not every year, but I would say within the first two or three years, you'll see a big drop, and then, we got a lot of young officers now, too, so it.
What, what, what's, what's our trending, Kathy? I know that you ran, you ran all kinds of, you looked at a lot of different things about how many employees that we had before, in two thousand and six or something like that, and how many we have now, and the increase in the budget of that department. Has it gone down any years?
I don't know, it, it hasn't gone down.
It's, it's increased because of cost of living adjustment and primarily the two resource officers that were grant officers. That were, were taken on.
The, uh, the thing that I have seen in other organizations is that when people are eligible for retirement, and they investigate how much their health insurance is gonna cost them privately, and they compare that to what their wages are.
Their retirement wages.
That are not their retirement wages. They, you know, if they're not closer to sixty-five in Medicare than they are fifty, they are generally trying to hold on to their job to pay for their health insurance. Now, I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, but you can't guarantee. None of us can guarantee that we're gonna lose two or three or four fifty thousand dollar a year jobs for this thing. I'm not saying it's not worthy. I think the police department is very important. I think the fire department is very important to everything that we do in the town. But I do think this is something that we're not gonna be able to decide in an hour.
We talked about this during the budget, and this was also delivered to our doorstep with the Leos. It was in here, page fourteen. That's what I don't understand about you talking about promising people. We had talked to Tony Sullivan about this on page fourteen. It says right here, a hundred ninety thousand dollars for the Leos, and it was already documented in here in our, in our books, so that's why we were, we talked about that to Tony, and we were, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
The only reason is, is, is that Tony said that he'd been promised by one of the candidates that they would get Leos. They were promised, so that's why, you know, that, that can be cause for concern also.
I, I listed it, Cindy, as being requested, and the next line where it says reduced or recommended, that's when it goes over to the scenarios.
I don't think we, I think we need to address the issue, not like someone might have said during the campaign. I, I've already told you that I, that I, I didn't even know what Leo was, so obviously, I didn't watch it. And I doubt that Cindy did, but what, how could we promise anybody anything, because we, we, we don't control the, the vote, so, you know, you e- even if we promised it, they, they shouldn't have believed it.
That was the chief, that was, that's all the chief said, that's the chief that you believe in about Leos.
I think we should leave that alone and address the issue. What's happening in the campaign.
Well, if they wanted to go sixty percent, they're paying their own way. I think if they wanted immediate, you could do that, and that would not be a problem.
I mean, y'all don't wanna have another, if y'all don't wanna have a workload workshop on the whole thing, I can go with sixty, I cannot go with thirty. I do not think it's.
It's not, it's not in the budget anymore.
Right.
Kathy, I agree with you. I think we should, uh, uh, look at the revenue stream separately, and whatever time we need to schedule a morning meeting.
I guess I'll be in the morning.
What time is it against? No, I, I, just go ahead, schedule it in the morning, that's fine.
It's gonna be working tomorrow.
What time do y'all have?
Bob's supposed to work tomorrow.
Well, I don't work, there won't be any coverage tomorrow. There's nobody to drive at five o'clock. So there's the, there's the number of guys.
How about Wednesday, have you got?
I'm for Wednesday morning.
Wednesday, Wednesday, I could do Wednesday morning.
Come on.
I could do rest.
I cannot do.
I can do anything else.
I cannot do Wednesday.
I can't do Wednesday.
I cannot do the rest this week.
I can do, then, what's Monday?
Monday's the day.
I can do the tenth.
Mm-hmm, I can too. I can do it. What time?
Tenth or eleventh, and I guess if we start, if we made it for the tenth, then we could, if it doesn't work out, then we can always have, have one the eleventh also.
I've got something, can we do the afternoon?
I have to say this, and I'm not trying to be a panic, if I might. Um, Chuck has to, y'all have got to give him a little bit of time to pull this thing together, because if we have to make changes, he has to go in and touch every single line
Especially for you.
in this budget, and it's due to the paper by twelve o'clock on Wednesday, the twelfth. That is gonna make it virtually impossible if you wait till the eleventh, for him to make those changes in time to get the budget.
Can we do the tenth?
Women, you, but you said you, you have, you do not have Leos penned in.
No.
So Leos is not penciled in, it's right now, but if somebody went to, and I think the big question to me is, if somebody goes to the police department and says, guys, if y'all want Leos, would you pay sixty percent of your, your, uh, health insurance? Then they're funding their own, and I don't have a problem with that at all. So, and, you know, and, and so, that would be just a, instead of having a meeting, that would just be a question to pose to them, Greg and Cecilia.
I'm, I'm okay with posing that question. I would, um, I think the fair way to propose it, though, is if we see the retirements come next fiscal year, that the amount of health insurance will be adjusted accordingly each fiscal year.
Ken, here's, here's the thing I'm worried, and here's the other thing, here's the other caveat, which, you know, we get into is, is that we weren't, that we were told we wouldn't be able to get into Leos last year, because of such a disparity between what that, the other, you know, we were underfunded because the stock, the stock market had gone down. If the stock market makes a correction, goes down again, then no matter if we come up with the money, we can't be in Leos. Is that true?
Once we're in it.
Well, I'm talking about that, that's what I'm saying, next year, let's say, let's say we wait till next year.
Yeah, I mean, if you wait till next year, and, and I guess the market plummeted, then it put us in a bad position again, yes.
VRS is gonna say you can't do it. This is kind of an anomaly in, in many ways. It might be a one-up and door, and I, you know, the sixty percent, I could, you know, I mean, I could live, do you?
I could live sixty percent.
I think they're going to go sixty percent.
I don't. Okay, but then that will be their choice.
Well, maybe we can decide tonight, so while you and Kathy are opposed to it, uh, to, to do it this year.
Oh, no, no, if they did sixty percent, we would be unfavorable.
I don't think they'd do that.
No.
But I wouldn't wanna speak for them, would you all?
No.
No.
So anyway, so you might want, so Greg posed the question, and then come back with that, rather than.
Well, is that a, a, that's fine, yeah.
I'd also like to get an opinion from John McCormick about the urgency of paying firemen.
Well, I've heard both ways. I mean, I've heard, uh, John say he needs them, then I've, you know, Bob has indicated things run fairly smoothly, so.
What, what does he part, three parts? But if you look at like just tomorrow, and Bob, and Bob's out, they have no one that can drive, they have no one that covers it. So that really tells you the precariousness of that situation, that they're, they're working, they're, they're living, you know, less than hand to mouth.
Well, let's pose those questions and see what kinda answers we get. Let's temporarily, or let's, uh, not temporarily, what's the right word? Pencil in, April the tenth, at nine o'clock, in case we, in case we need.
Wayne would write that, or in the afternoon.
I'd rather have it in the afternoon, but it's, it, it's not urgent. I mean, all it is, is Bob's cardio, and I can.
Well, that's pretty, I think that's.
Pretty important. What time is your cardio?
It's at nine thirty, i- i- nine thirty to eleven.
We have the town talks salaries, and I said that, so let's schedule it after you get out. What time's good for you?
Oh, twelve, one, or whatever.
Let's just schedule twelve then, and the town talks four, is that all right?
Well, that's a high one, babe. So let, let me get a clear understanding of what you all are asking me to do, is to propose the sixty percent with the police officers. And to ask John how important for.
On his candid opinion.
On three or four.
On his current need, maybe current and, let's say, what he thinks he, based on this year's fires, and, you know, what he thinks his need will be. If he's comfortable with that.
I mean, those four-time positions, that the number he gave me was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I know.
That includes fringes, too, that sounds like fringes.
I know.
I would think that's a little high.
Yeah, we think that's a little bit, a little high.
I think you, I think you base that on the starting side of the police officer, I think that's what you.
Well, the starting side of your police officers is right at thirty, so thirty times four is a hundred twenty thousand, throw in another thirty-five percent for fringes, you're still only at two hundred grand. So, three hundred and fifty.
Sounds like about the same cost of Leos for four firemen.
I mean, those are the, just the two big issues that we always have annually.
When we have one, well, we sweep under the rug, and that's the historic properties.
Well.
And when you get to that, we only swept under the rug for, I don't know, twenty years now?
Right, but at least it's not, but, but, you know, public safety is our.
I know, I understand that.
That is our charge, so.
I just don't, I didn't want you to think this was an ill.
Correct. Now, do you all, um, you know, I don't, I just don't feel like in this work session, we're gonna be able to tackle any tax increases other than, than than the increase in cigarette taxes that we were all aware of. So, I think we need to put the, put any types of tax increases on this agenda. That's personal property, that's real estate, that's bid, that's entertainment. Uh, what else is being suggested?
The only thing suggested in the budget is the bed tax.
Bed tax.
There's nothing else suggested in the budget.
Right.
It's bad.
On the backs to backs. People laying on the back.
Everybody, everybody seems to be okay with the two dollar per trash can solid waste collection, but that goes to the sewer fund, correct? That doesn't.
General fund, but, but it funds, you remember, we're gonna do our own recycling, so it allows us to get the employees and the truck to do our own recycling. Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta have the initial alley for the recycling bins.
Are you gonna do bins rather than cans?
Uh, I don't know, that's a John's question.
That's a thought, the bins, like everybody's used to, and it seemed to work well, anyway.
I guess what I'll look at is cans, and the cans are, not that they're not beautiful, but, you know, I see them sitting in front of people's houses, beside people's houses, and, you know. The, the people just don't seem to know where to put them, and something that's smaller, like a, uh, like a bin, might be a little more manageable. And especially for some people that are older, probably trying to pull two trash cans down.
It works well, it seems to work well now, and I know a lot of people that use those bins for other things in between recycling day, too. They're handy.
Yeah, really.
I might have done that a few times myself.
That means it's moved elsewhere in the budget, public, in the public liability.
I see, okay. I was looking at these, uh, you know, these individual sheets that we've got in our page, and, like.
You're still, you're still cover.
We need it.
All right, shall I carry on now?
Sure.
I, I don't have a whole lot more, now, I'm gonna let Chuck, you know, walk you through the comparisons, but um, built into the budget is the capital improvement plan, which consists of the green streams road realignment, and the meadows. Also, the urban pathway project, and the Wataga Creeper Trail project. And this is probably a good time to mention the Wataga Creeper Trail project, and that is because we had Mister, we, we had two landowners come in today to sign the documents, and we now have one who has asked for fifteen thousand dollars more than the council appropriated.
Come on now. Come on now.
So, um, to.
Kevin Worley, excuse me, Kevin Worley has an email that documented what they had agreed to. And she agreed to eight, uh, twenty-three hundred, but then, and then today, it's hers.
Well, you know, the thing about it is, we already agreed to pay more than the appraised value, so, I mean.
So, the bottom line is, this would have to be on, um, to have, is it next month's agenda for consideration appropriation? Unless we can convince her between now and then to, um, accept what she originally agreed to.
Yes. And the other part of the agreement that would get possibly messy is the fact that it also contains a clause that dictates the closing within thirty days, and we have all the work ready for that.
That's, that's disappointing, you know, it's very disappointing, yeah, that she said to him one thing. Is that email in any way binding?
Well, it is a, um, it appears to me to be binding, I guess it's just whatever we like.
Well, the, the email was between Kevin and the other party, and not with her, so. Square, square, uh, land-wise, is it the same amount of land that we're getting, what's the disparity, what's the, there's less coming from her end than?
Yeah, there's less land coming from Ms. Canton than from Mr. White.
And she doesn't see that, the first square footage?
No, I, I think she had a preconceived idea that her price was a hundred thousand. And Mr. White acted on her behalf in penning the email.
Okay, um, moving on to additional revenues that are in the budget. Cigarette tax increase is in the budget, and user fee for solid waste is in the budget. The bed tax is in the budget, which seems to be the sticky widget, and then the increase in reassessments. Is everyone okay with keeping the increase in reass- reassessments in the budget?
I am.
I am, keeping the rate the same.
Yep, right now, right now.
So really, it seems like in terms of talking about taxes, this discussion will be limited to bed tax, is it?
No.
No?
I think real estate tax will be.
Okay, real estate taxes, okay.
I think as you look at it, you have to look up, if you're gonna save eighty thousand dollars, you're gonna have to make the difference up somewhere.
So we'll look at real estate, we'll look at bed tax, and we'll look at amusement tax, and, um, real proper, uh, personal property tax.
We'll pick all that, yeah.
And the best way I know to present that to you is sort of like what we put in here relative to the real estate tax, what a penny translates to.
Right. Now, will this be a, and will this be a, uh, will there be a public hearing with this, or this will be? I mean, I know, well, citizens have a chance to speak, I guess, because I know that.
Oh, yeah.
You know harder than a brand ton of people.
If we go, yeah, if we enact any new taxes, we have to have a public hearing.
And, and let me, let me also tell you, just so you know, from a legal perspective, if you enact new taxes, you have to adopt the budget with the new tax by a supermajority, which means four of five councils have, council members have to.
So the one thing that I'd like for you to check with us is to see ethically about senior. About voting for that increased tax, or not voting for the increased tax and talking about it, since that we both, uh, it would, although it wouldn't affect our bottom line, it could affect our buildings.
Are we gonna discuss this on the tenth as well, the taxes and Leos, right, that's what we're imagining?
And the fire department.
Yeah.
On your consensus.
Okay. And.
Yeah, that, that's, I mean, that's fun, it's made to find out if, if, um. Yeah, that, that's, I mean, that's one of us need to find out if, if senior and Rick can participate in a bed tax discussion.
Well, we can, we can, we can be part of the discussion, we just might not be able to be part of the vote.
You know, Mark Flynn, if you have a conflict, you have a conflict, and you can't discuss it at all.
Okay. Well, then, if nothing else, then you can recuse yourself and talk as a citizen.
Right. No?
Recuse yourself in the board?
Is the super majority, uh, four of them, based on the people voting, or is it based on the actual number of council members?
Actual number of council members. Now, whether or not you can, I guess we can look into this, Wayne, there's probably a thin line as to whether or not you can recuse yourself from one component of the budget, but approve the rest of the budget.
I met with Mark Flynn about that, and he said that you cannot discuss your particular business, or it's, or the effects of your particular business, but if it's inserted in the budget as a whole, and you vote on the budget as a whole, then you can vote on it, you just cannot vote on that particular item, and discuss that particular item.
It's even suggested that the person with the conflict leave the dais during the discussion.
During the discussion.
You know, well, see, that would be recusing yourself, if you do that, then you can speak as a citizen.
It's a fine line.
Well, what it is, is a lot of...
Separate yourself from your title, is what he said, me.
Well, the thing about it is, the thing about it is, we gotta retreat with Mark, uh, next Friday, anyway, so...
We have a lot of opportunity for those very kinds of things.
Okay, and, um, last, which I've already touched on, is the sewer fund, and really it is, it always indicated it's self-sustaining, and I don't see, we have not raised any rates or anything like that in the sewer budget, so I would presume everybody would be okay with sewer budget as presented.
It is, I'd like to ask if we got the comparison sheet that we asked for during the budget process from the, we wanted a comparison of what our rates are, and Washington County service authority, yes, do we have that?
We, that, Deb, that's what was sent to Jason, is that correct?
No, we asked for it in the budget process.
I know, um, say that I think we have the documents, but not a hundred percent sure.
I have a copy of the documents.
The service authority rate, and...
Yes, I have those upstairs, that we want you to get those.
Well, you could just email them to us before the...
Probably that, if you didn't.
And with that said, um, with Chuck running you through the comparisons.
Uh, this is the, comparing twenty sixteen seventeen to twenty seventeen eighteen, it's, you know, and I thought for illustrative purposes, it made a lot of sense to make sure that you understand that the general fund was reduced by approximately a million dollars, and then you've got six and a half million in capital ALA, that's associated with the Meadows project. The sewer budget, as Greg indicated, went up, did the reallocation of some salaries, as well as some planning on some retirements, which the sewer, the wastewater plant has upcoming, so those are the differences between those numbers. Next slide. Through on that, but that's just showing that the percentage of the, of the hole, as far as the, it's the same, just in the pie chart, depending on what percentage has changed. The sewer fund, general fund last year was eighty-three percent, and sewer fund was seventeen percent, uh, when you add the two together for the general fund, it would be eighty-six percent, and then the sewer would be fourteen percent. Next slide. This is just a breakdown, uh, by, department by department, what it was and what it is, uh, in the, is, I guess I'll pick out some of the, one of the larger ones, municipal building, which done consolidated, uh, a few towns utilities and all that into one budget last year, and then reallocated it, and based upon audit recommendation, we will allocate those out for the seventeen eighteen budget, that's why that particular line decreased so much, was that those, uh, those line items were allocated out to each department, instead of being budgeted centrally and allocated out at the end of the year. Next slide.
Why did, uh, why did the council's line go down so much? Is that because of the insurance out? Okay, thank you.
Uh, some of the other, uh, some big ticket items here that did reduce some was, uh, the urban pathways, which we'll start on that, so John felt like that that would be the amount he'd need for next year, uh, the Creeper Trail, which we've already discussed, hopefully we'll get some of that spent this year, and, you know, reducing that that's required for next year, the recreation center has been decreasing, uh, for this, you know, it has gone down, uh, uh, we've done some reorganization within that department, and some, and some stuff in that area, I just put the sports, the Meadows project up there, so we'll see that in there for seventeen eighteen, and we'll have comparison sports next year. Department director of planning zone has decreased largely due to staff attrition, uh, the other biggie was talking, uh, contingencies and debt services, and what's happened there, we've already allocated the non-departmental's, uh, so those are already reflected in, in the, that's non-departmental allocation that's in the twenty seventeen eighteen side is part of the twenty sixteen seventeen contingency line, so that's already been taken out.
Mr. Diana?
Yes?
On the municipal coun, uh, council, and, um, as Ms. Loeb said, something about the insurance being coming out of that budget, what insurance was that for?
It was an insurance that was already being picked up, uh, was a public official liability, and was already been allocated in between general fund, sewer fund, so we didn't need another, it was basically a budget allocation, nothing was being charged to us, we just took it out.
And you're, you're still...
You're still insured.
This is if you're, if we assume individually or collectively as a council.
It's already, and it was already allocated to other lines within the budget, so...
How many Tuesday, by the way, is it, was it?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'll have to get back to you on that. Uh, the next slide. The top five largest town department budgets, uh, the leader of the pack is your police department, followed by public works, uh, street department, and, uh, then you have the rec center, tourism, and then parks and, parks and playgrounds, so those are the largest chunks of the highest of the street. Next slide. Uh, salaries and fringe benefits, it prints out correctly, but didn't fold into a print correctly, but it's, it's really just shows that there's really no change as far as the percentages of allocation between the salaries and fringe benefits, fringe benefit line. I would say this will be on, we'll put it online, keep it going. Next one. Uh, seventeen eighteen, rates and fees, just as, uh, items in red, as anything that's a little bit different, uh, sewer, there's a two, two, two dollar proposed rate increase for, uh, if, if we're doing recycling programs to be managed by the town, uh, one of the things that, uh, you've got fifty dollar deposit, nothing, none of the other things changed as far as rates, so I'm not gonna go through those. Uh, personal property, uh, that's one of those areas that the council could consider, real estate's another area the council could consider, uh, the proposed increase in cigarette, uh, the tax to thirty cents per pack, and a proposed bed tax, that's one that we have further discussion. General fund revenues, this is where the monies come from, uh, I think the next slide, Floyd, would be more helpful as far, can't tell, but I can, the top sources of revenue for, for this is the, uh, you get from Commonwealth, we get from VDOT revenue sharing funds for any road projects, along with monies for the police department or the fire department, uh, those, uh, come in at like four point nine million, uh, from mills and lodging, which is, uh, the darker blue, it's forty, it's, uh, four point one million that comes in from mills and lodging, uh, the non, the, the budget for the, uh, for the drug, for the draw of the, uh, Meadows project, that comes in roughly four point one million, and then you've got real taxes, or real, real personal property taxes, that kind of, real, real property taxes comes in at two point two million. So, mills and lodging is, and made from the Commonwealth, are two of the largest chunks of, of funding. Next slide, that's just a breakdown, you can see what real property taxes are, is two point two million, mills and lodging, four point one, from Commonwealth's, four point nine, non-budget, which includes, uh, what means from loan funds, uh, which would be used for, uh, the, uh, the project that's proposed is four point one million, so that's where the largest chunks of revenues are for those, for that budget.
So, what's the Washington County one, says ninety-three thousand, what was that?
It comes in, Washington County is ninety-three, that is, there's seventy thousand that is allocated for the fire department, and the remaining comes in for the parks and rec, and that number's been reduced for the past three years in a row.
So, so that's fine, that's one of the reasons, am I right, that we've had to go on Washington County residents being part of the county center, is because it, uh, underfunding or the additional stat, stopgap funding count from the county has gone down?
That's, that's correct, and one thing we're uncertain of right now, after we put this budget together, is whether or not the county is actually going to fund any on the fire department.
So, the fire department, seventy thousand dollars, and how, what's our fire department budget?
Two to four hundred and some thousand.
So, there's seventy, and we have over fifty percent of the calls are in the county rather than the town, so they're not even paying their fair share, right?
Not even close.
So, if you wanted to offset that, I, I mean, the logical way to do that would be not to run, I mean, I know it's a sticky widget, but not run the calls in the county.
Well, we, we, you know, I think the police calls we shouldn't run, I think the fire calls, you know, be a little problematic.
Not a lot of police calls.
Oh, well, that's good.
I think we have a meeting with them and talk to them about this.
Yeah.
I'd like to do that.
Good luck.
Sewer fund...
They haven't been very receptive in the past, and especially when we're running fifty some percent, it should be two hundred thousand dollars to help them fund, and they're gonna come up and say they help us fund the trucks, but the trucks is part of, part of their own business, you know, we had to fund the other part of that, and so, it's a part of, you know, part of going out there on the fire calls. So, how much, right now, they're out of money for the calls that we went, that they pay for, because we have a per, per price call, you know, an average per price call, they're out of money for what they gave us in business proposals.
No, we're, the, the town, the town citizens are paying for fire protection in Washington County right now, that we, that we respond to, which also includes our district and other jurisdictions, including Damascus, something like that, Green Springs, we're going to these places now.
Have they actually discussed this publicly, that they're going to, uh, that they're considering reductions?
Well, they've, they've done, they've done for years.
It's been tabled, as I understand.
All the other departments were approved, except for any of the fire...
There was a discussion about, I mean, you know...
Mr. Estes is one of the...
Well, they, they, well, they...
Yeah, he doesn't wanna speak.
That would be a terrible pickle for me to...
He shouldn't have to, but you know, you know, what you're, you know, basically what you're looking at, uh, admin citizens are paying double tax, they're paying two times the tax because of the fire calls, and so, is that fair for them? No, but then what's, so, so what do you do to make it, to equalize it and make it fair? You know, do you step to the, stop answering those calls?
What's the justification of the county not...
They don't have to have any. I mean, they don't, I mean, they haven't justified beforehand, it's, it's been a thing about, just every year.
My, my understanding, my understanding is that, um, it got tabled because, um, um, John wasn't at the meeting, and he was under the impression that somebody from the administration this year had been told to go to the meeting, we didn't know that, and, so, you know, if they want, if they want me, or, or Cecile, or Chuck, or somebody like that to go and show them the numbers, we're happy to do that, if they reset that meeting, but...
Well, I think that...
I don't know if they'll reset the meeting or not, so...
Yeah, let them table Kathy's, let them table Kathy's, too, and it was, and, and I tell you what, it was real interesting, because I understand that there's just a kind of a wide, I almost call it conspiracy against that, that, uh, the incubator, which this town has half interest in, so, you know, I think it's an egregious, egregious, uh, thing that's been done, so, but hopefully that'll play itself, too, and we're gonna feel everybody involved.
Sewer fund revenues, just broke down between what's actually, the sewer bills, and then pretreatment control, Floyd, only has a small sliver of revenues coming for that, next slide. Total debt service for the sewer fund, it's seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, which is roughly fifty-four percent of the debt service, for the general fund is six hundred and twenty-two thousand, or forty-six percent of the, uh, the amount of the debt service for, entire debt service for the town. Just to, Alex, show them where the debt is located at for general fund, uh, you've got three hundred and one thousand, uh, and two hundred and nine thousand through the quarter bank bond issues, that's the largest one, we have a garbage truck payment, a computer backup system, and a fire truck payment that makes up the other, the green shades over there, the other part is that. Next slide. Sewer fund are all VRA loans, good thing about some of these VRA loans is that they're zero percent interest, so you can't get any better than that, uh, but those are the, the amounts of the three different loans with the VRA, which we hold for wastewater treatment plate. And the current holdings as of the end of February, checking, uh, certificates of deposits and savings, for the certificates of deposits are six point two million, for the checking, there is, uh, one point two million, and for the savings, there are almost one point three million for the savings.
Could I ask you a question? How much of that, I know the checking is not part of the reserve, how much of that money is, is for our reserve?
The CDs and the savings accounts, you could probably just lump those in, the bank one consists of a general fund and sewer fund money, so, if it's, uh, for a total amount that's currently, current holdings is eight point seven million. Any questions?
I've got one question, the sewer rate, is that, uh, for the first ten thousand gallons, is that a minimum, or is that...
Yeah, it's a minimum, yeah.
Another one, they're gonna get that...
They're gonna, whether they use it or not, they're gonna be charged a lot.
That concludes our presentation, but we'll get the questions answered for the upcoming meeting on the taxes and the documentation that you requested.
Since, since there's a, and since there's a, um, a, uh, kind of, um, a disagreement, maybe on the bed tax, would you mind sending out to everyone that pays lodging tax, a letter saying that the, that the bed tax will be going up? There'll be a bed tax added?
No, just that, that we're considering.
I don't, I don't wanna do it unless we do the, uh, public hearing with it in it.
Well, what, what you're doing, you're enacting a tax without them actually knowing about it.
No, I think what we need to do is... No, I think what we need to do is put public notice out that we're meeting on the 10th to discuss all of these proposed tax increases. And we can also put that on the mayor's Facebook page to Cecile and company. And Kim can draw up a, you know, what we discussed, what's going to be the topic of that meeting.
Listen, all the taxes.
Yeah, we can put it out on, on several mediums so that everybody understands what's in there. Twelve o'clock, so that Wayne can, Wayne can, what is it you're going to do? Rotate?
He's going to jar down and roll around. He's going to run down the road.
It's ugly, Kathy.
He's going to navigate the jar. On Tuesday, yeah. I had a full house. All six years of the weekend. I had a full tub twice. And so then I was kind of getting ready for that to come in tomorrow. So, and so was, uh...
I was, I was doing the last one last pitch. When you do, uh...
No, that looked like a lot of cars over there. I remember.
Well, in the upper part.
Sister was in for strong, she should have let my dog.
Okay, it's six twenty. Kim's almost done.
You're fine, I had Jesus Christ.
Okay, so we're gonna call, brief, call this meeting back to order. And we are now at new business and we're gonna hear the update on the picnic shelter proposed for Fairview.
Yes, I see.
Okay, and I'm gonna, Sean, sign. Tune yourself so you can help me. Okay, as, as you already know, the Old Wave Tractor Association, OGADA, um, would like to have approval from the town to construct an event or picnic shelter. The, uh, Fairview, the approximate location, am I sure that you have any sort of visual for this one? But Sean, would you like to approximately tell us where it's gonna be?
Yes, it'll be, approximately it'll be, um, in the front field to the, as you're approaching Fairview from this direction, uh, at about the middle of the field. There currently is a fire, uh, uh, water spigot hydrant right there, and it'll be right beside that. Um, that's, but also one corner will be where they currently, uh, grow a lot of potatoes.
And pursuant, pursuant to the Virginia Code fifteen point two eighteen hundred, we are compelled to have state a, uh, public hearing on matters like this because it's considered real property. And, um, after the shelter is constructed, which will be made with wooden posts, um, sawmilled lumber on the mordant baton style on the eaves, and metal roofing which will match that of Fairview, there'll be a fire pit constructed sometime later for molasses and apple butter making, and for public or used by the public or the town barbecue for that as well.
And this is something they already had in their budget and they're not requesting funds.
Right, they are not requesting funds, OGADA is, uh, is simply seeking approval.
They're thinking about eighteen thousand three hundred dollars. As of that, we appropriated fifteen thousand dollars in the accounting budget for them. So that will more than that, you know, that will, you know, partially cover that. And, uh, but I, my only question is, just to clarify, I'm not on that board any longer, but is that in the property that we have, um, on the other donate property, one point five acres, or the other four point five acres, is that on our prop, our property?
It's on the leased property.
Is it on the leased property or is it on?
Yes, I checked on it today with Mr. Taylor.
Is the lease agreeable to that?
The lesser?
I mean, the lesser.
I understand, yes.
Well, we need, well, we need a signed consent letter.
I don't think so. We're simply, it's, it is considered real property when it's integrated into the, to the land like that, and I understand from Mr. Taylor that it's been agreed upon.
It's not an assignment of lease.
No.
My question...
So wait a minute, so we're, we're, we're...
We're progressing fifteen thousand dollars to build something that is not gonna be on town property, it's gonna be on private property, privately owned.
No, it's, it's leased for...
It's, it's leased for approximately fifty more years. Which should actually be the life span of any such...
That'd be me.
That'd likely be me.
Um, my question is, was there no talk about doing it on the property that we actually would, we own, other than the lease property? Well, see, the property that we own would not be, is not as accessible for this type of thing that we want to do. It, it would, for what we own, it greatly limit its function. And majority of what we own is actually used for growing, uh, uh, corn and wheat. I thought you had barns on it. No, we have, we got the barns, and we got over there near the substation.
So it is near area that's accessible for parking.
I actually had a call from somebody that was working with them, and they didn't want to build on the government-owned property because they didn't want to give the government any money, I mean, any property. That was the call.
Just take the money and not the property.
She wanted us to release something, and I don't remember what it was, before they would... I kinda was a little bit confused about that because they said before they would use their money, and since we're appropriating it, I didn't feel like it was their money, but I, I referred them to Sean and David.
So we'll have an opportunity next year to remove that lease for an additional ten years, and then we have several other...
Does the document say that we are guaranteed that we can lease it?
We have renewals that we can exercise. Okay. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Consideration of EB Stanley Middle School's TSA to build rain collection system at Fairview, Sereen Moore, Director Westwood Operator, Brick Statch, or Building Inspector?
Yes, that's me. So, the technology student group at EB Stanley would like to, or they, they, they come to us to say to them about constructing a rain collection system at the Fairview home site. And it's essentially a system that incorporate on one of the barns there. It's, it's, it's a barn closest to where the community gardens are in that field. It's a, uh, big, uh, gutter system that leads to a storage tank, and then from the storage tank is a pump that will actually push the water out to the field where the gardens are, where there'll be hydrants that the gardeners can use for watering the gardens.
Is there money in the, uh...
There is.
Sustain Abingdon budget for that?
The TSA requested, um, two thousand dollars from Sustain Abingdon. And once, um, the remaining enforcers come in for the Earth Day on April twenty second, and we leave a little money in the budget for the community garden, we should, um, have two thousand dollars to donate to the project.
What happens if you don't?
We will give them what we have. We told them there is a possibility, you know, uh, that, you know, it may be a little less than two thousand, but, um, I have ran the numbers, and I think we'll be fine with that.
We got it.
So it's likely to be different students, and it's good for us because we'll avoid a gutter system on, on one side of the barn that will help with this slight erosion problem we have there. And it'll be good for the gardeners to have access to rain, clean and water.
Right.
I guess my concern is that the letter says that they need thirty eight hundred dollars of funds from the town, and, or it says through Sustain Abingdon. So, knowing that the council has already spent all of our remaining funds through June thirtieth, I mean, there's probably some money somewhere, but we're, we can't guarantee that we have any additional funds to put toward the project. I think they should know that before they move forward, because this is thirty eight hundred dollars.
They, um, they actually have been, um, doing some fundraising and gathering donations, and not on material, but money from, um, local businesses, and getting some contractors to donate their time. Um, we have explained to him that, um, two thousand is probably the maximum that we'll be able to donate for the project.
They, they are committed on their, uh, move forward with, with, with the remaining balance from whatever we can give them.
Okay. And so do you all need a motion or anything upstairs? Or is this something that Sustain Abingdon can do? Because if you've got it in your budget line item, it's already yours to spend, right?
Well, that's something Chuck might help us with on how to get that money out there to, to, you know...
We can have a vote of support for it though, Cap.
Uh huh. So, so should the vote of support be up to two thousand? It should be up to two thousand dollars.
Well, how about a vote of support with the remaining funds that could be allocated to the interim Sustain Abingdon, and not listing a dollar amendment?
Okay.
And what would we be trying to run their committee?
Anybody else having questions? Next, we have, um, consideration of amendment and bylaws for the Tourism Advisory Committee. That's ice and hour.
Yes, I met with Mr. Costello, um, some time back, and spoke about these, um, just very few tweaks that he would like to have done by way of this PAC committee. And, um, I think you'll find these, it's under section three in the bylaws. And the first one, and by the way, Amanda Livingston, the interim director of tourism is here. I've just met her, actually, myself tonight. But, um, she will take any questions and inquiries you might have on this, right Amanda?
Happy to.
Okay.
I don't really have any questions. I do have a concern. The reason we changed these bylaws in the beginning is that they were struggling at times to have a forum. And so that's when they decided to let the ex officio members vote. Uh, I understand why we don't want a Washington County Board of Supervisors representative. I, I understand that one as an ex officio member, but I really feel like, and I don't care if the council representative is, has a vote, because we have a vote upstairs. But I really feel like the Chamber of Commerce representative and the Abingdon Main Street representative should have a vote. And I see these at-large positions, and I would propose that we move at least those two into at-large.
Those are in addition to at-large.
I know. We, we expanded this to, to give at least fifteen members. But I'm not in favor of not giving the chamber or Abingdon Main Street a vote. I think they should have a vote.
If I can speak to that, one of the points of discussion when they proposed changing this was that they actually had a difficulty meeting a forum because of the ex officio members who are not always able to attend. In particular, um, the chamber very rarely sends somebody. Um, Main Street does come, um, council, of course, comes when they can. Uh, but sometimes we're running into an issue with some folks, you know.
All right.
The forum was an issue in the other direction as well.
I'd still like to see the chamber and Abingdon Main Street have a vote, if council is agreeable to that.
What is your, Amanda, what are your regulations on number of meetings attended? Uh, is there minimum or maximum and consecutive, uh, meetings missed, everything?
No.
You know, one of the things that might help you is if you had a, if you had, if there were three, three consecutive meetings or three, you know, meetings missed during the year, since y'all are monthly, that, uh, that that...
Yeah.
That, that, that those, that way you get the members that did went out there and get people who really want to come and vote.
Sure. Actually misspoke, it is, it is in section five. If they miss, um, failed to attend three consecutive meetings, maybe considered a hard design. Um, I'm not sure, Deb, does that, um, apply to ex officio members as well, or just...
It depends on what the rest of your bylaws says, or voting members.
I, I don't think, uh, obviously cannot speak on behalf of the Tourism Advisory Committee, but I don't see any problem with having these changes to that. I think the thinking was that, um, traditionally, commonly, ex officio members do not vote, and so they were bringing it in line with that common practice, but I, I don't think it's a big issue.
So we would put that adjustment or amendment to be that ex officio members, with the exception of chamber, and, uh, with the exception of Washington County Board of Supervisor Representative, and Abingdon County Council Representative. Okay. So you, you want chamber to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
And Abingdon Main Street.
Okay, and the next one is, um, on down, number eight in that same list would be to remove the Hartwood entry.
I believe that's good. That...
Yes. And to change the Virginia Higher Education Center to Higher Education Field. And the last one would be under section two, um, to add Washington County Board of Supervisors representative.
As an execution.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that to be exclusive to the representative of the county?
I started to say, I had it written on here, I'm glad you said that. The Washington County Board of Supervisor Representative needs to be one of the two Abingdon proper representatives. So that would be whatever Phil's district is and whatever Allison's district is.
For them and Abingdon proper.
Yeah, that, that, they represent...
That's also outside of...
Right, but, you know, they represent Abingdon proper, both of them represent Abingdon proper also.
Okay. Okay, Congressman. Looks good.
So we'll need a motion upstairs to, is this a public hearing, or we're just talking about it tonight, and it's, it's going upstairs next month?
This is not a public hearing.
If I might, I'd recommend that the changes be made to make sure that they're consistent with what you're asking for, and we bring it back at the main meeting.
I agree.
I agree. I absolutely agree.
Interject that.
Okay.
It's not a regular agenda, but...
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah.
So we're of a motion to postpone, um, Tourism Advisory bylaw changes until the, um, main meeting. Very good, thank you so much for your hard work on that. I know ordinance updates are extremely tedious, and we appreciate it. Next is, Claude Howard, wants to be updated on the picnic shelters at Virginia Highlands Community College.
I don't have a lot tonight, I, I guess I could refer to the time here.
Read what we've been doing here lately.
Um, well, we're gonna, we're gonna get a total of fifty flags, or fifty banners to go along Main Street in conjunction with Virginia Highlands Community College in a discount program with their students. So, um, they had a procurement issue and some other things going on at the college, so they've asked us to maybe let them order twenty-five flags with their logo on it, and then the town get twenty-five flags with our logo on it. And we could kind of stagger those along Main Street. And then we'll have to do, um, some fresh releases and some, um, public information announcements to announce how the discount program will work, and then they'll work on marrying with the students to let them know, and there'll be some, um, claims or some certificates in the windows of the participating business, businesses, so the students are reminded... windows of the participating businesses, so the students are reminded when they're downtown which businesses they get a discount through. So we have a design, Mr. Howard got approved. Was approved some funds, so in order to keep our funds and their funds separately and the procurement issues, Dr. Couch asked that they do 25 and we do 25, so we have some designs. We've also asked them to send a design that would pull the town seal off. We had a recommendation from Amanda that said the seal would be so small that you really wouldn't be able to see it. So I have asked her to pull the welcome on the right hand sign, the welcome off of the bottom and put it on top in the brown color, and then take the seal off and push the Abingdon logo down just a little bit, but leave some of that color on it. So as soon as, as soon as we get that design, I'll pass that back out and see if you all like that better, and let me know. We'll move forward with it.
Most of these will be on our town-owned black light poles within, between, I guess, Towne Street and Russell Road. They've got permission from Appalachian Power to, possibility of putting some banners on their poles on Russell Road and Main Street towards the college.
We're working through that, and I had a phone call about supporting Emory Henry College, and I told them they're on the list of, they're on the next list of things to do.
Let us get this one through first.
Yeah, let us get this done and we'll do that. We're down to council member updates, update on Appalachian Power project involving Virginia Highlands Airport. I think before I give you this, I need to say something about this airport. The town of Abingdon nor Cathy Lo have had anything at all to do with the airport expansion or the runway expansion or any of the issues that Virginia Highlands Airport authority, of which my husband is a member. We've had nothing to do with that, the town, Deb has not, Greg has not, I have not. What we have done is we have an airport overlay zone, the town of Abingdon does. And the power project was in the way of our airport, it was in violation of our airport overlay zone. So the reason we got involved with petitioning the SCC had to do with the overlay zone and economic development opportunities for the town of Abingdon, specifically in the technology park. Having said that, I received a report that they have come to an agreement, and I'm gonna let Deb, because I was not in on the last couple of meetings, but she was, so I'm gonna let her tell you what has happened with that.
Well, I can tell you that we have prepared, and Mr. Kelly has read through and okayed a supplemental statement to send along with the county and with the airport, supporting what AppCo is submitting to the SCC. So that will go in probably tomorrow, the next day. We finalized the last footnote on it today, and that should be ready to go. And it simply gives us what our first choice was, which, to tell you which poles and posts and all those kinds of things, I really can't tell you, except the underground part that was the controversial matter has been approved and tentatively going forward with that.
We had two existing, pretty good-sized businesses that provide some very good tax revenue to the town of Abingdon, who were gonna be impacted if those power poles were put above ground. Yes. And they were both extremely concerned about that. And so that is really how the town became involved in this whole airport Appalachian Power company issue to begin with. The town of Abingdon gives no funds to the airport, the town of Abingdon does not have a vote on the airport, and when they originally founded the airport, I think we own a little bit of property. But we don't ever get that back unless they sell the whole airport, so.
Sort of like the incubator in the city.
Sort of like the incubator, that's correct.
There's a small consideration also in some protective sorts of ideas with our historic properties and other kinds of situations.
Right. And I forgot to say that, there was, one of their options on their map was to go right through the mustard grounds. And Matthew caught the ball in midair when they demanded a meeting with him without much notice, and he called the forestry, whoever, conservation, the folks that had the conservation team.
DHR.
And had them here when they showed up to meet with him. So the town had lots of concerns, but really no dog in the hunt, if you will. Okay. Are there any other questions about that? Discussion relative to the letter received from delegate Doris L. McQuinn, Cindy Patterson, councilwoman.
Well, I received a letter as well as all of council this week, was it last week? Ms. Quinn has proposed, or did propose two bills, bill number 1547 and 2296. And these bills were to help to build a Trail of Tears walking path. And I really wanted to go into, a little touch a little bit on this, I mean, I've got some documents I could read, and will read this morning, because I think it's really, they're all important, but this one's important as well. But we'd like to, or I would like to bring this to the council's attention, and their opinion, of course. Abingdon was a major hub for the slavery Trail of Tears. The Trail of Tears went from Alexandria, Virginia to New Orleans, and that was from the tobacco growth in our upper region of northern part of Virginia down to this area and southwest Virginia. And then the rest of the trail went on down for cotton fields and things like that. So I believe that what happened was, I'm going to believe in what happened, Ms. Quinn, McQuinn, excuse me, she scored two legislative victories with unanimous passage by the House of Delegates of these two bills. She sponsored to give equal state recognition of historic African-American cemeteries and better preserve and tell the history of African-Americans in Virginia. The bills were approved on a 97 to zero vote, an uncontested legislation, accompanied by money to back them up, including $150,000. The House Appropriations Committee proposed to identify and preserve historic African-American sites and artifacts, and $38,875, Governor Terry McAuliffe included in his proposed budget to pay for upkeep of two cemeteries in the Richmond area. Ms. McQuinn said she's just elated after the House vote, she thinks that we're moving Virginia in the right direction. Also says that she was a former councilwoman as well, and this is near to my heart, because she was a councilwoman, now she's moved up to the representative, and she was chairwoman of Sidney's Slavery Commission, got help from Republican budget leaders who recommended funding a multi-pronged effort through the Virginia Foundation for the humanities to identify, preserve, and share the history of African-Americans in state history. It goes on, and "House Bill 1547 will direct state funds to nonprofit organizations for preserving historic black cemeteries and graves on equal footing with Civil War and Revolutionary War burial grounds in the state. Easton Cemetery in Henrico County and Evergreen Cemetery in Richmond would receive money to preserve nearly 7,000 graves. House Bill 2296 would create a 12-member task force to assist the Charlottesville-based foundation with broad mission to promote the identification, preservation, conservation of historic sites significant to the history, presence, and contributions of formerly enslaved African-Americans in Virginia." But anyway, to keep going a little bit further, we have a map here showing slave trade routes from 1810 to 1860. The Smithsonian did an article on this, the slavery Trail of Tears, and I think there was like four pages in this article, and it's very touching when you read it. Can you all see that back here? Okay. So that being said, I wanted to support looking into this and see if we can perhaps embrace this and see how we can establish a slave trail here, and help economic growth through tourism. It also honors our African-Americans that had to endure this, and is also an educational thing so that we don't repeat history.
So when you say you want to support it, how do you want to support it?
Well, can we have that for discussion?
Uh huh.
We could discuss, Mr. Proctor also, he stood up in our council chamber one evening and told about the slavery Trail of Tears, and he actually was the one that identified that article, and I got to read it, it was very touching.
I'd be glad to add just briefly what, we did meet with delegate McQuinn, and just to flesh that out a bit.
Not to, not to, not to, but you said we, I was telling her, who's we?
Well, there were about a half dozen or so of us that went to Richmond to meet with delegate McQuinn, and one was Marjorie Smith, who was a resident down here, Joe Levine went with us, Rudy Flora, I'm just trying to think, Al Bradley was there.
Steven.
Maybe the others, but about that many. And when we met with delegate McQuinn, what she is trying to do is to form a commission, and that's what this bill was about, was to form a commission that is museum curators, professors, delegates, that kind of thing, and their purpose is to try to identify places that have significance in slave history, and then to try to educate those areas as far as the economic impact of that, historical impact of that. And as Ms. Patterson pointed out, when delegate McQuinn was on city council for the city of Richmond, she had taken, at that time, Governor McDonald out to show him the trail that was in Richmond, and then included auction houses and all of those things. And of course, Governor McDonald ran into some of his own problems later on, but he was so moved by that, that he said, "I don't know what I can do, but I'm gonna do what I can to support this." Well, it turned out to be almost an $11 million appropriation for those sites and signage to take place in Richmond. And as part of identifying what's around the state is an effort to try to preserve those before they're lost. One of those that she was involved with was a dump site for slave bodies in Richmond that DCU had voluntarily put a parking lot in. And so they identified that, unfortunately, part of Interstate 95 was already over that property, but to try to preserve those, the General Assembly also funded this time money to preserve slave grave sites that's equivalent to what's being preserved for Confederate veterans, preservation of grave sites for that. So there's money being appropriated for that. So I think delegate McQuinn is trying now to get the word out to different communities that this is something of national significance, the order, the reference that Cindy made to that article had delegate McQuinn's efforts in that. Last year, when she proposed that bill, it did not get out of committee. It went before the Rules Committee, did not get out of committee for the House of Delegates. This time, she was kind enough to ask us that we would be willing, some of us, to speak to that committee, which we did. It got out of the committee unanimously, went to their funding source, was funded there, went to the Senate, came out unanimously, was funded again, as Cindy pointed out, was unanimously approved by the General Assembly and will come law. So this commission has been formed to try to identify these sites. Our potential contribution to that is the fact that the Meadows property is right in the middle of where this came down, the Trail of Tears came down with the hell of a long corridor. So it came down in here, some of the slaves were housed for a period of time there, some of them were shipped off toward Chattanooga, some were sent on down toward New Orleans. So it was a hub of what was happening there. So that ties in with delegate McQuinn's work in Richmond with that, and there's a direct connection with what's being done there. So I think what she's trying to do is to preserve as much of that, and a lot of us just didn't know that history, and still don't. And I think it's, she feels a great responsibility to try to educate the state and preserve as much of it as left that has significance. The property, the significance of the Meadows is that's where the slaves worked, was on that plantation. They didn't live in Governor Robertson's house, which also has significance, but that's the reason for that whole area being of significance to this project. So what can Abingdon contribute to that? You know, that falls back to you folks to make a decisions to what's the best use for that property. But I think it's important to know that this has gained traction as a state project, it's gained traction as a national project, and we're sort of on the cutting edge of that, opening up of that chapter of history, which, and all of us know why that's important, I don't need to remind you of that, we all know that we can't again forget and repeat what has been one of our most, our darkest chapters in nation, is how we've handled our relationship with enslaved people. So that's what we did.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Did you have any African-Americans representing the town of Abingdon when you confronted this lady about that issue?
Marjorie Smith was with us.
Okay.
And do you mean someone that's African-American descent in connection with that, or?
Yeah.
Marjorie was one that went with us that would fall into that category.
Is she from Abingdon?
She went to a segregated elementary school in Metta View in the 60s, and is from this area, her mother's from this area, she moved away and worked in New York and then came back, but her mother became ill to do that. So she probably knows more people in this town than I do. So that, that would be, I mean, you're certainly free to talk to her about her own connection, but she spoke very eloquently about that issue.
She was alone in that elementary school.
She was, sorry?
She was alone, so race, she was the only one. She was by herself, everyone was white.
When they integrated?
Oh, when they integrated.
Part of it, it was a segregated.
I think it was, I think she said it was like fifth grade that, when they integrated.
And so she was the, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to nitpick, I'm just trying, I don't know her, I think she was, I think she works the liquor store.
Oh, yeah, she is.
Yeah, but she, I don't know, she was from Abingdon, that's what it threw me. But when she was in Metta View, you're saying when she went to Patrick Henry High School when they integrated, or when she went to?
Elementary school in there.
I think it was in fifth grade.
Yeah, because all the fullens and all that, Metta View, gosh, there was a lot of.
She said she was the only black person in her class.
That could be true, but there's a lot of, you know, the fullens and all that, or about her age, so.
Well, she told me, she told me, and how the feeling that she had.
Do you have something to say?
Well, she was in fifth grade, 65, when that occurred. Let's see, I was in the seventh, so I know her, and I will speak with her on that matter, because I think it's a whole lot, you used to speak about the history of the Meadows and all these, some things I could fill her in on that she don't know about that area.
I'm sure she'd be glad to talk with you.
I think it's a great idea to have, and I know that, I don't know if you read the article, if all of y'all read the article, what that they were trying to do, and basically what they're trying to do is to tie a thread, one in Richmond, one in here, on the road to make a path, to make a trail.
I think it's actually from Alexandria, which is also there, from Alexandria down to Richmond, down to here, and she wants, her, you know, when we were talking to her, her goal is to tie the entire state, because the one thing was, you know, we all have heard of the Indians.
Yeah, it's a bad selection, I think it's a bad selection term, because when you play up Trail of Tears, it brings up Indians.
It brings up Indians, and this was, you know, this invasion was 10 times the size of the Indians.
I understand, but the map shows Alexandria to like Winchester, and Winchester down the Grand Wagon Road, and then there's two of them, so anyway. So, but anyway, so, you know, they were tying roads up like, you know, the Grand Wagon Road. the Grand Wagon Road, which did not go through in the Meadows. I know there's some slaves over there. It was real interesting, and I didn't know, slaves were housed over there when they came through Abingdon. I've seen nothing that said that they were housed in, at the Meadows when they came through here. Like I said, they were in fields, and they were also in wooded areas, and that's where that they were housed mostly, most of the time. Then recently, I had someone that, and I have this, this kind of digress, but it might be something to include, is Solville. How important Solville was on that, because the Robertsons, when the, Robertson's, the seventy-two slaves, the majority of them, except for mostly house servants, worked over there. And they worked in Solville. And recently, a historian forward me quite a bit of information about the number of slaves that are over there and probably are buried there, too. So the Solville would be a great place also for them to look, to link up to. So I'll just, I'll throw that out, too.
Sure. How do we not know that the Meadows wasn't a slave dump site also?
We don't.
What am I?
You know, we can talk about the, I think Mr. Kelly can give us an update here in just a minute. I will say this. The use of the property has been decided. Now, it may get undecided by twenty eighteen, but right now, the use of the property has been decided. We have signed a contract with Food City, or KBAT, or whatever, Marathon, or whatever corporation it is. And that contract says that there's a reversionary clause if we do not do a sports complex. Therefore, we can't include anything that has to do with the Meadows at this time in that. However, that was three thousand acres. That's, I'll let you speak just a minute. That was three thousand acres of land, not seventy. I would say probably Mr. Levine's property was in that, Ms. Harmon's was probably in that, Ms. Patterson's was probably in that. I'd say most all of A Street, Mr. Tripichunas' property was probably in that. So you all actually have an opportunity to include your own property in that, you know, to get the ball rolling. And it doesn't require any council action whatsoever. I think it's, you know, the cemetery over here, Sinking Springs Cemetery, is probably another area that is of interest, that can connect. But right now, we have decided the use for that property. Yes, sir.
You know, what I was going to say is, I think if we focus on the Meadows, we're diminishing this whole idea.
Correct.
I mean, this is to go the entire state. You know, there were things here in Abingdon that dealt with the slave trade other than that. You know, there was the slave trade block. You know, do we know what that is? Can we find out where it is? I think if we try to focus this on it's a Meadows issue, I think we're diminishing what Dolores McQuinn's planning to do.
I agree with that.
And I think that the whole thing here is not whether the Meadows decision of what's going to be done with it is done. I think it's more the thing of Abingdon working with Richmond and trying to join with these other communities overall, not specifically to one site.
Yeah.
I have to agree. I think that's...
I think you're absolutely right.
And try it on.
And I still believe that this, you know, I'd like to see the town do it, but again, that does take council decision to decide whether or not to join up with and work with these other communities.
And if Ms. McQuinn would be willing to commit funds toward a project, there's lots of property owners in this room right now that could work with her and get that ball rolling. So I agree with you, you know.
It's a very worthwhile...
It's a very worthwhile...
Project.
Project.
Yeah. And so, you know, yeah, and, you know, very worthwhile and project. As you know, since that was done just this year, there's a lot of fleshing out that it involves.
Oh, yeah, oh, sure.
And so, you know, and so to have bookends, I know that she would probably appreciate bookends. Then you're looking at Tennessee, because, you know, the matriculation was down Tennessee and then out to Kentucky, out into the, into the west. So, you know, there is literally a whole new chapter to be written, you know, if Richmond wants to put some money forward to do that, or citizens want to work toward that. I mean, I think this would be a great place for a museum for African American history. And so those things, as you go along, but, you know, Ms. McQuinn coming here and helping, you know, try to maybe give us the ideas of what they have to go along. Is it going to be just markers on the side of the road that talk about that? Is it going to be, are they going to have some waysides? What exactly does she envision? And that visioning process might help us all get a better handle.
I think so.
You know, if we embrace this and, you know, write back to or reach out, you know, I think it's worth, you know, like you said, Rick, this just happened, there's a lot to flesh out. But, you know, get on it and let's start looking at it and see what's possible. As far as, you know, Richmond giving money, hopefully, if this thing does grow, there will be money available.
Well, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars already. I read the bill, and it was a hundred fifty thousand dollars for identification of, you know, cemeteries and things like that that's in the bill right now.
Well, first they have to form their commission, so.
I know, well, that's a small caveat, you know.
I think government works, I know.
But I really hope, I hope for what Mr. Anderson says will happen, and that is, as they do this. You know, there was a guy named, I don't have his name here, I remember his, Worrell or Waddle, that he came and bought slaves there here. And that's the written, that's the written stuff that they used having Abingdon on that trail, on the trail. And so he had a small group. He wasn't a big independent slave person. He was a seller. He was a small person, he had twenty slaves he bought through Abingdon. And that's where it's listed in his diary, his letters, saying that he actually was outside of Abingdon getting ready to go through, and everyone was doing well, and he hadn't lost any one, or no one had run away. And so, but that's, as far as I know, that was the only correspondence that was in within that scope that I know of that had something written that has Abingdon in it. But that being said, that has Abingdon in it. And so I hope that when they make this commission, that they'll reach out to African Americans in Abingdon. You know, people whose families and families worked on the plantations, people whose families contributed to make Abingdon who it is today. That's one of the wonderful things. That's all of us that's made Abingdon and what it is today. It's not one individual, it's the collective. And hopefully, they'll reach out and get those African Americans from South West Virginia and have them on the commission.
True. That's what I was thinking, too. Also, I was thinking about a committee, you know, to put together a committee to help work on this. So whatever the steps may be, you know, to check with Ms. McQuinn and, you know, put these two together, maybe mesh up with a committee and get this ball rolling.
Well, I suggest, as a starting point, the letter was written to you, wasn't it Kathy?
It was addressed to me, but I think everybody was copied, weren't you?
Yeah, I was copied, but I just didn't remember who the letter was written. I suggest that the council that supported this one upstairs, we make the motion that clear in support of Ms. McQuinn's suggestion and that we cooperate in any way we can, and we'll be looking for opportunities.
Are you looking for maybe sending a letter back or something like that?
Yeah, I think we should respond.
Well, I think it would be good to respond. Do we want to...
I'm not ready for a motion.
Well, no, no, but one of the things you do...
We need to investigate what she has in mind.
Whatever you want, whatever.
Yeah, you can develop the letter and then let us look.
Right. You can, I think we just need to let Deb or Greg or whoever, management, find out what Ms. McQuinn has in mind when it comes to this and Abingdon in general.
One thing I think we ought to keep in mind is, you know, the African American people that's left this area, because, you know, economically, financially, whatever. But there's a whole lot of bad taste towards Abingdon within that, that community. You know, that's one thing that we should try to clear up. If, you know, it's a bad taste, you stick Abingdon to a whole lot of African American people.
Well, we had, Steve, you had, you gave us a handout, I read that. We actually had people here, two attorneys, is that right?
Yeah.
And they were instrumental in rounding up slaves from other areas.
Yeah, they were buying them all around the region.
Well, see, the thing I'm telling you, and this hadn't been that long ago. You can talk about two, three hundred black people in this town. Now, you might have twenty or thirty. And it hadn't been that long ago. You know, we're not talking slavery, we're talking everyday life.
One thing that...
And why they don't, won't come back? They can't raise a family. They can't get a job, no. They had nothing to look forward to.
Jimmy and I talked about this many times, about why people move away, you know, whether it's raising families or finding jobs. Bottom line is, the African American community hasn't had the jobs. And if you look at a lot of the African Americans that moved away from here, they worked for the gov, they worked for, they were military. They went in the military, and now they're private contractors. And you, you know, yeah, been very successful, you know, from Johnny Lo, to Puthier, you get to all the guys that went out and had to leave here. And there's a whole body of them, probably thirty or forty, that now, that now are retired now. They're old, they're old people like us, and, but now it's being, they're independent contractors for federal governments.
And you know, the first question to me? How you put up with that, that long? You know, I live here. You know, there's always an alternative.
The other question that I have with Ms. McQuinn is that I think it would be a matter of respect, that she goes through the two delegates that represent Abingdon.
Yeah.
I actually spoke with one of them today, and they felt like they needed to be included in anything that had to do with Abingdon. And that would be a matter of respect if she worked with them first.
I got, my impression from her is that that's what she is interested in. Of course, I know all those things.
She has not contacted them. I have, but she hasn't. So I would assume that the first thing that I would say in a letter back to Ms. McQuinn, if that's what the council wants me to do, is that I would appreciate it if she would contact Delegate McQuinn, Delegate Pillion, and work with them to...
And Senator Perico.
And Senator Perico. And work with them to promote this in their districts.
That would help gain support and traction for people down here when it goes to a larger vote, you know, to expand out in the state.
It was, they not voting, what is it, ninety-seven to zero vote, so they, you know.
That's not, that's not Abingdon. That was general, that was basically Richmond. So I would be much more comfortable if she worked with them.
I'm agreeable with that. I mean, I'm not disagreeing.
And I will send a letter to that effect.
Now, that's, and that's what they want.
But I thought they would already know how, as they voted.
They know, but she didn't ask them to get their district due. They do know. Okay. Okay, so we're, after consideration of letter of agreement between Abingdon and Main Street and Virginia Main Street, get Greg Kelly to...
Yes, as council had asked me to do last month, was to develop language that set forth some of what the requirements were, stipulations were between the town and Abingdon Main Street. I have met with Jennifer Montgomery, who is, she's put us on notice she's leaving. But nonetheless, I have put this to the agreement that is in your council packet, which is under item seven, which begins on page two of the document, which sets forth the expectations that the town would have with regard to the Main Street Director and things that we would want for them to do. What we need is, if, in light of the uncertainty with Jennifer leaving, the council needs to determine whether or not to authorize me to sign the document now or to wait to a later time when perhaps there's a new Main Street Director.
I would like to postpone it.
I would prefer that. I would like to pass somebody else on.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I did send the agreement to my board. We have a board meeting on Friday, so they will be able to get a full look at the language at that time, and I think that would be good if you did postpone it. Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you for your service.
Thank you for serving. I miss you, too.
Yeah, man.
Thank you.
Just want to go, you want to be in Virginia Beach by summertime, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else concerning that, anybody? Okay. Update on RFP for ground penetrating radar at the Meadows.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is something that the council had requested that I work up, was an RFP for ground penetrating radar. And I do have that document worked up with a lot of blanks in it, which the blanks are things that will require DHR to help in inserting what the minimum requirements they will accept are. I've had two teleconferences with representative of Core Civil Engineers and with DHR, and they are supposed to be getting back in touch. I think they're actually also working with the company that filed the original report, S-M-E, on whether or not their report was something that is adequate for them to make the determination. But this is very complicated in the sense that some of the procedures that they set forth was, number one, the Corps won't let us go on the property until we have final permission from them. They won't give us final permission until DHR tells them exactly what is required for the archaeological study. But I do have a document here that's several pages long for the RFP, that all we have to do is insert the appropriate language. When we get the language, and then it would be matured to go out at that point in time to see if there were consulting firms. Now, if DHR comes back and says S-S-M-E, is that the right name?
S-M-E.
S-M-E. If they come back and say that they have done everything correctly, then I would lean upon council to determine where we go from there. But I do want you to know, we've had this document ready since February, and again, the holdup on submitting it has been because of the Core Civil Engineers and DHR. And Cecile and Sean and John have been in on some of those discussions with them. But some of the requirements are pretty intricate. I mean, everything down to the type of paper that these documents get submitted on is something that is scrutinized. I believe in one instance, it had to be on onion skin paper, which I didn't know they made onion skin paper anymore, but I guess it is. But anyway, that's where we are on that. And, you know, I'm not trying to in any way delay or anything, but I have the document here, it's been prepared, and we're ready to go when DHR and the Corps tells us we can move.
So let me ask you a question. You know, if we go ahead and do a motion, that, is this a 106 trigger?
It's already, we already did it.
Okay, well, if it's, yeah, well, if it's a 106 trigger, then why don't we go, why don't, you all tell me, we can make a motion, or I can make a motion, or somebody else can make a motion, that we align ourselves with DHR, what the requirements are, so Greg can go ahead and put that in and send it, and get us something immediately, rather than having to go through, or what do you think about it? Tell me what you're thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, you know, ethically, I don't think I could send out this and not know what information that we're supposed to be searching for and spend the money. And the report comes back and it's not satisfactory for DHR or the Corps.
And DHRs aren't going to stand, we're not going to live or die by them.
Right.
So if we go ahead and say, if we go ahead and say, "DHR, we will be compliant to all their standards of what they have, of what they require," and go and have that ready for Greg.
We already have that motion.
Not in a, I don't think we...
Now, the motion was just to go out, to submit a RFP.
Oh, I'll see what to say.
What this is, is this is to go ahead and get it all back to DHR, when, in preparation of DHR, DHR's whatever they want, what they require. That way, those requirements, then Greg could plug those in and be ready to... I mean, am I wrong, or, I mean, if I don't need to do it?
That's the only thing, that's the only thing I'm waiting on, is just the requirements from...
If you don't need, if you don't need anything from me, I mean, I won't do it. That makes, makes your understanding. But Greg, are you...
But Greg, are you saying that the Corps won't let you on the property to do this kind of thing, is that, is that correct?
That's correct. They won't even let the developer of the commercial track even move a piece of.
Okay, but the Corps is requiring DHRs, they want to know what's going to be done, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, it seemed to me, I thought of what we intended, I made the motion, for you to comply with that and do whatever needs to be done.
As long as everybody's on the same page, I can't do anything until I get the information.
Well, and know that it's under, it's up to DHR to make those requirements, and no matter how stringent they are.
We don't have any, right now, we don't have any choice but to do that.
Yes, right.
And this is for the ground print?
I just, I just didn't know if it needed another motion because of that. Yeah, this, this RFP is specific to.
And also, you're probably getting ready to go on to number three, is that also the quality review, the air quality review as well?
The air quality review was not for an RFP, it was to go out and see if there were companies that would be interested, and I've contacted one, two, three, four, and I've gotten no responses or no estimates, but what I did in the interim is we got the 2015 full report of the Virginia Air, Ambient Air Monitoring from DEQ, and we contacted DEQ, and they basically said whoever would be doing this study would be relying primarily upon this data unless we went way outside of this geographic area. And based on 40-acre track, there's not, that's probably why these folks are not responding to me. But nonetheless, I have this report from DEQ, which is, is available and shows the air quality in the area. And I was also informed that if VDOT does their exit 17 project, that the air quality would be studied by DEQ again in conjunction with that project.
It would be several years.
I don't know.
You're talking about the Smartscale project?
Yeah.
It's not supposed to start before 2021 construction, but the study, studies in all the preliminary design will take place before that, between now and then.
Well, the studies will be done in the first phase, won't they, John? That's the environmental phase, right?
Right, environmental and preliminary engineering typically done first stage.
The air quality study just needs to be done before we, in my opinion, before we start with the sports complex. So I'm okay with seeing if we can get site-specific, and exit 17 would be site-specific information, so we can be assured that it's not a problem with the kids playing. So we've got some time on that one, that it's not going to start before.
Yeah.
We've got to design the sports complex first, right?
Right.
Yeah, so I don't see, we're in a hurry on that one, I think the grades are more important.
Would you contact somebody in Tennessee Knoxville area?
The closest we have is a group out of Christiansburg, furthest away was New York City, and there were two in the Tidewater area of Virginia, air quality consultants in Virginia Beach, and environmental consulting and engineering services in Norfolk that do these types of things. Check my notes here real quick again, Cindy. And also, one that I have not been able to reach yet is, and it's interesting that they do this, but I'm sure it's not through them, it's through a client of theirs, but Spillman, Thomason, Battle, which is a law firm, is listed as a group that does environmental quality. They're an international law firm, and to refresh your memory, Webster Day, our bond counsel, works for that law firm, but I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Webster to see what companies they would use.
Greg, good. Could I ask that someone on the staff contact VDOT and see if they're going to do site-specific air quality monitoring before we go in there?
Yeah.
As a part of the.
Exit 17, read some.
Yeah, if they're going to do site-specific monitoring, and that would be.
Would that be adequate?
I think so. We can kind of get their judgment on that, too.
And I have the report again for DEQ, and I know somebody, Mr. Macbeth, I think, he alluded to it being in existence, but if anybody wants to see this report, it's here.
As long as it's close to the interstate, I don't think it has to be the exact spot, but the problem is if it gets a generalized air quality study, doesn't measure the gasoline and the diesel fumes and that sort of thing, that tend to be near the interstate and don't disperse throughout the town.
I'll try to make that contact, maybe be able to.
Well, I think if it's, I think if it's in the exit 17 area, that would be a strong indication.
Does that have any site-specific, or how that they came up and extrapolated the air quality control, because it might be in there, Wayne, already, they might have looked at that and done it.
Generally, those kinds of studies are general indication.
I mean, it gives the geography of what is studied and covered and the quality of the air that is in existence now, but I haven't talked to VDOT yet, I've only talked to DEQ.
If somebody on the staff would clear that up, then maybe we can move from there.
So we have five minutes left, probably three and a half, is there anything on this remaining agenda? I see Deb looks like she's got something in her hands. So I'm going to deviate if it's okay with you all and get whatever information we need to get before we go upstairs.
Well, real quickly, this is the, this has to do with the governor's signing the home state ordinance, or not, the one that will enable us to go forward with the home state ordinance. He did the state law, so which that will be effective July 1, which helps us out tremendously, helps us with working with online platforms like Airbnb. There are about 16 of them, Airbnb is simply one of those platforms. Very quickly, this bill will enable us to, while our ordinance require registering, obtaining a business license, will help us to regulate and to impose taxes. It may not be a huge tax deal for us, but it will level the playing field with those of you who are B and B operators and hoteliers, moteliers. It gives local governments information and the ability to regulate and tax, and tax bills backed by hospitality industry. It gives localities fees and the ability to penalize up to $500 for not getting those business licensures and treating themselves like all the other folks who do.
Is that per issue, is that per state, that they, that they had like 29 states that they could hit $1,000 fine?
Per violation.
Per violation.
And I think everything that we have in our initial draft is pretty much consistent with this, and this was in the Richmond paper today, that allows localities to create a fair and reasonable system for registration and accountability when the industry feels welcome and residents feel safe. The safety regulations include smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, and a minimum, they list the minimum at being insurance. It was higher than most, most regular homeowners, so I don't think that's in this particular.
So Airbnb's have to have a larger, greater insurance policy.
They do have to have slightly elevated.
So I guess the other thing, my other question is, is Sean, does R1 allow bed and breakfast in, and so they'll have, so if there's somebody in residential R1 zone, then they would not be allowed to even be in Airbnb?
Yes, Airbnb is pretty much transcends, because they don't use signage, there is an item with traffic that's also.
Well, I have parking, and I can see like in larger cities, the parking would be an issue.
Parking is an issue. I think that we have on our initial registration, things that will address those kinds of concerns. But we should have that up for the first, at least the first draft, will be effective till July 1, but we have a couple of months to tweak it, and we do have the first one done.
No, you don't have a couple of months, you have Bristol Speedway, you have the Bristol Race Company in town, a lot of people do the Airbnb for Bristol Speedway.
Well, we also sent out a preliminary letter to folks that we know have operated, and we're trying to.
Encourage.
Get all, yes, encourage that one a little bit early. So we also still have the others going, but there's, we've been a little sick here in the town hall, we had 11 cases of different variants of sundry flu and everything else at one time. Tanya had both strains of flu, I'd like to announce that to everyone.
That's because you're special.
I'm not afraid.
You're a real host there, honey.
Like we married.
Really?
Okay.
We haven't seen this in a while.
Okay, so, as you all know, we leave all of these other things on the work session agenda until we're convinced that they need to be taken off, so the rest of this, I think.
Are we going to carry those? Are we going to carry upstairs the sign ordinance and stuff in there? She says a whole group underneath there.
No, she doesn't have it.
We're doing that.
Those are things she's working on.
Okay.
So, so I'm going to recess the budget portion of this meeting until April the 10th at 12.
If it's okay with you guys, I don't mind doing like a written report. The last time it comes in that we've been out of time, if that's something that you all.
Thank you.
You don't know the nature of this.
Betty Ben, where you doing, Betty Ben?